Order for the town Hingham Board of Selectmen for Thursday, December 15. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of December 1, 2016. As amended, I guess. Yes. Okay, there amended.
Does this version contain?
I know she said moved or yes.
My edits that I gave?
I think it did. They should be originally in there from a week or two before.
I don't see them.
Okay, I'm sorry, I won't speak.
I don't.
All right, then, you know what? We won't do that until we're absolutely certain.
Sorry about that. Yeah, thank you.
Let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Is somebody here from Fruit Center?
Yes.
Come up, please. Tell us what you'd like to do. Want to transfer a retail liquor license?
Michael Modestino of Braintree, Mass., representing the Fruit Center, Inc. And Dan Brewer is here, representing the existing licensee.
So what are you proposing to do here, counsel?
What we're proposing to do is transfer the existing license to my client. They have a purchase and sale agreement to sell the business with due to have a closing around the end of February on this transaction. My client runs the fruit store and grocery store at 77 through 79 Water Street. They've been running it since the 80s, and they would like to take over the business. The present licensee has agreed to sell to them. My client has had experience in selling liquor before. They run a store in Milton, and they have a similar license in Milton, and they know how to do it. They think they can do a good job at it. I think they're qualified. Mark has worked in the company. He's the president of the company now that his dad passed away a couple of years ago, and he's been with the company since 1984. And he was experienced in setting up the liquor license in the town of Milton and setting up the section of the store that sells wines and malt liquors. We think that it's a good deal for everybody, and we think it's a good thing for the town. I think it's important to keep the license in the store, and I think it will be a complement to the store going forward.
So practically speaking, there'll be no change in outward appearance of the operation?
No, not at all.
Call questions.
Questions? The paperwork is all in order?
Okay.
You're in great business.
I agree. I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of the retail package store, all wine and malt beverages licensed from Bearco Wine Gourmet Wine Annex to the Fruit Center, Inc. Mark Edward Magnosa, pronouncing it right, manager, subject to the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Nice job. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Apologize for the interruption, but I just looked back on the minutes, and I'm good.
Oh, okay.
I think it just took me a minute to just check and make sure, but if you wanted to go back to that.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 1, 2016, as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thanks, sorry about that.
No problem. Uh-oh.
All right.
When they all come in.
Yeah. Let me coach my. Well, I want to thank you for coming. This is, we're very pleased to have you, let me tell you that right now. Coach, Margaret, I thought, we all thought it was appropriate that we came here, recognized the phenomenal accomplishments that you have made over the last three years. It's difficult enough to win one state championship, as Coach knows, but winning three in a row was phenomenal. I had the pleasure of being at a number of the games down the stretch over the last couple of years, and I made it up to Lynn on Saturday and followed my way to, I think, the Manning Stadium, I believe. And it, the game was physical, and I'm not a soccer player, but I give everybody credit. There were people going down, and people getting hurt, and you stood up and gave it right back, which is the way it's supposed to be. But it was, everybody was at the edge of their seats. Everybody was so happy, everybody was so proud of you, no matter what the outcome of that game was. I'll tell you that right now. But it was a pleasure to be there, and, you know, my colleagues will speak for themselves, but I just wanted to personally congratulate Coach Margaret and you girls for winning that state championship for us, because you did it for all of us, and we're so proud of you, and we thank you very much.
We're not only proud of your accomplishments on the field, but your accomplishments off the field. As I look and know, I know some of you, and I've known some of you for a long time, we have a lot of honor roll students. We have a lot of students who are involved in their community, and we have teammates who care for one another. And you stick together as a team, and you take care of each other in so many significant ways, and you're just, we're so proud of what you do, both on the field and off the field. And Coach and Margaret, thank you so much for all that you do as well.
Ladies, congratulations. My daughters played sports in high school, and they form relationships that stay with them as adult women today. So I'm sure you guys are gonna stay friends through school, college, you're a credit to the town. So, thank you so much for your accomplishments, and congratulations on your success. And to the coach, the athletic director too, for supporting this in the way that you do. Thank you, sir.
Good job, girls.
Thank you. Coach, would you like to say anything?
No, I just, I want to talk, you know, just to kind of piggyback on what you said about the honor roll. You know, two years ago, we had the entire girls soccer program. Freshman J.D. and Barstee beyond the honor roll. There's quite a few.
Right.
You know, we have some girls going to some, you know, really great colleges, and it's just, I think that the town, the support the town has given these girls is, you know, I don't think they maybe realize it, but like you said, years from now, they'll look back and realize it. No matter what game we went to, no matter where we were, we had more fans than the other team. You know, I said, I'm not lucky enough to live in the town of Hingham, but it's nothing like Hingham Athletics. I teach at Braintree, and they can't even compare, so. That's the town. You know, they get a round of applause on that, too. The girls really felt it down the stretch.
Thank you, Coach. And I will say one last thing is, I think Paul and Miru mentioned it, not too long ago, we were out doing some service in the community for some veterans and elderly folks and a number of the, and I don't know all of you, so you may, more than I've seen, but there were a number of the team there out helping out these people, and greatly appreciated, and it shows a lot of character for you to give back to the community and know to that level at this young age. So we're very lucky to have you, and good luck with school and those that are leaving with college. But we're, again, we thank you for the good memories.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Hit the books.
You're gonna stake the budgets?
Support yourself on your mind. But it's good, it's all good.
You have to follow that gentleman.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, and for the folks at home, we're continuing on with the hearings that we have concerning the town's budget. And tonight, we're gonna hear from the South Shore Country Club, these two fine gentlemen here, fire department, dispatch, rec commission, and police. So with that, Tom, would you lead us off?
Sure. So Jay McBrill, the director of the South Shore Country Club, and Bill Friend, president, I believe?
Chair.
Chair. From the committee here, to present their budget for FY18. Their total dollar request is $2,192,765. The administrative request is the same, and that represents a 3.7 percent increase. So I'll leave Jay to explain the details and answer questions.
Thank you, Tom. I'd like to start off by thanking you guys for having us here tonight, thanking Bill for coming with me, and the other members of the Country Club Management Committee that made it out in the freezing cold here, Paul Casey and Rod Gaskell, and also to our advisory committee liaisons that helped us a lot with the budget process so far, and they've been really involved in our meetings and come into a number of our budget meetings to help us. So, our fiscal 2018 budget plan shows positive cash flow for the South Shore Country Club. The golf course continues to operate at near capacity on weekends throughout the golf season, and we continue to manage our expenses. We've revised our approach in a few of our different operations, such as golf business and weekday golf rounds, and continue, and expect to continue growth in those golf areas. The golf course is our most productive asset, and we can, we plan to continue to invest and improve in that asset. We're currently examining short and long-term approaches to our swimming pool facility and its operations. The budget plan here in FY18 is what we believe will be in effect in FY18. Also, based on our monthly structural assessments, we will continue to operate our current pool as long as we can. Some of the things that we've changed, or that we've brought to you this evening, are we revised our five-year business plan. I brought copies of it for everybody tonight, just hard copies for you to have.
Thank you.
Yep. Although we, we're in the, we started the process of doing this every year now, so we have a five-year business plan, and every year, we're trying to roll it forward and work on revising it, developing it, updating it. A lot of Bill's guidance and the rest of the Country Club Management Committee. And the game plan for us is to do this annually so that we have a look at the future. You know, we have an idea of what's happening, what's coming up in our businesses, not just our cash flow, but the individual sleeves of what's really happening. This year, we did it with the assistance, as I mentioned, with our advisory committee liaisons. They helped us develop it, they helped us edit it, proofread it, and make sure it was a good plan that we could submit to you guys this evening. Because at the end of the day, we're looking for ways to continue to grow our revenue, and we're looking for ways to cut our fixed costs, which is a challenge for us. Our biggest fixed cost is payroll at the club, and that's something that we've really looked at, trying to change the way we manage our personnel, and our year-round personnel in particular. And it's reflected in our FY18 budget, but as part of the plan, I also wanted to let you know that in FY17, actually starting in July, actually starting in June, but then rolled over into July of this current year, in FY17, we've made some dramatic changes to the way we manage payroll and personnel at South Shore Country Club. And we've made some really tough decisions. We've eliminated a few year-round positions, and we've changed the structure of our payroll. It's worked so far. It, you know, when you come to the club, there's a different level of personnel there, but it hasn't affected our revenue or the way that customers are interacting with our personnel. I haven't had a lot of complaints, so, you know, and we've been able, in FY17, to significantly decrease our payroll at this point, and that plan will continue to roll forward for the remainder of this year into FY18. I think the reason that we realized we need to do that is we have, there's fixed costs we can't control that happen at the club, and we need to be able to offset those with smart, intelligent personnel decisions. So that's what we're working on there. There's new opportunities, too, that are reflected in FY18 that I want to discuss briefly. The real, the only change in FY18 from our FY17 budget, numbers-wise, is we're looking at additional debt of our golf cart, a new golf cart fleet that we're bringing next spring, or next June, next June, actually, or next July, when the fiscal year changes. So that, we're looking to increase a little bit, we're taking on some new debt there and add into our overall debt, but we're gonna raise the rates of carts from $18 to $20 per rider to offset some of that cost. And at the end of the day, we do fairly well with golf cart rentals, and by having a fleet that is a little bit better than what we're currently running with now, ours are starting to be on the dilapidated side, unfortunately. We own them, which is nice, and we've had a few years of no debt, which is nice, too. But we've had to, we've had to invest significantly in their, in the upkeep of them, so. So that's a change for FY18. Other opportunities that we have in FY18 are, we started the Hingham Scramble Championship this year. It was a, it was an idea that the Country Club Management Committee and myself came up with as a way to help us with some of that capital pressure that we feel in the enterprise fund, in our operating budget. So we had a golf tournament, we solicited people to play, members, other members of the community, we looked for donations. We raised in our first year $30,000, and we were able to put that directly back into the golf course. So that's $30,000 that we didn't have to use out of our operating budget, that we were able to put right into the asset of the country club. So of course, it went really well. So we're like, oh, we'll do one in June, we'll do one in October. We don't want to run the well dry there, but it was, it was a success in our first year, and we were able to upgrade the tees on the second hole, the tees on the seventh hole. We redid the bunkers on a number of holes. It was, it was real work that we got done, and we accomplished it as soon as we raised the money. So that was a nice addition this year. Other things that I want to discuss real quick is, we've been working with the rec department, really hand in hand, to try to increase some of our, like, our golf instructional programs. So rather than the country club having to spend a lot of money on advertising and go out, try and solicit people to join these programs, we're working with the rec so they can use their advertising arm to bring us customers. So we put a program together, an example of that is we're running a bowling, golf, winter vacation camp for kids in Hingham, and that's for this upcoming school vacation week. The rec's advertising it for us, they're handling registration, we pay, they're taking a small percentage of the fee for that administrative part of it, and we're teaching the kids and, you know, taking care of them from nine in the morning till noon. So those are our new programs. We're not only looking at that for vacation times, but also in the summertime, increased programs in the summer. So we're working with the rec to try to improve some of the efficiencies and add to our programming strength, so. Bill, did you want to mention anything?
I, the only thing I would like to say is that the personnel decisions that Jay mentioned were difficult, and so we're, the committee's really pleased that he was able to do, make some real tough decisions, but needed decisions, so I, it was a tough thing to do, and he got it done.
The only, the last thing I wanted to mention is, although I just gave you the business plan, as part of the business plan, there's a five-year cash flow projection, and it's in the middle of it, it'll be hard for you to find right now, but when you take it, you have a chance to take a look at it. It shows FY18 being a tough break-even year for us, like we've had the last few years, but starting in FY19 and moving forward, we have some significant change in the operational debt structure of the club. The irrigation debt falls off the books, and we've carried that for 15 years now. That's $200,000 a year. And it almost, it doesn't fall directly to the bottom line, because we've had to take out, we're planning to take on some new debt for equipment and things like that, but it definitely changes the look of our break-even budget over the next five years. So you can, that's reflected in the five-year business plan.
Colleagues, questions?
Do you have a question, ma'am?
I just, first of all, start out and say that personnel decisions are the toughest ones to make, and I appreciate the professional way that you did that, and know that that wasn't easy. And I also really am pleased, and I see Mark in the room, so I extend thanks to him as well, the collaboration between recreation and the country club, and I'd be remiss if we didn't also mention John Ferris, because all of you have been looking at a lot of our fields and looking and saying, you know, are there some things we can do to some of the fields we have to increase their utility, because it just always seems like, no matter how many fields we have, it's kind of not enough. So I think that, that's sort of a collaboration is terrific. I would just point out to my colleagues and to the audience that, you know, this, I think the budget for the country club in some ways is the most challenging, because the revenue is so unpredictable. You know, it's dependent on the seasons, it's dependent on the weather and what's happening. You know, if you think about it, close to 90 percent of our, of our tax levy comes in from property tax here in Hingham, so, you know, we have a pretty stable revenue base, but for these folks, it's really, really tricky. And, and, and I appreciate the manner in which you're doing that. I had gotten a copy of this in advance, and thank you for sending it. I did look at the cash flow. And one thing I would just also remind us all that dates back to my days on the advisory committee, but one of the things we talked about was, when the country club gets to a place where it has positive cash flow, that it might be a good idea for the country club to have a small fund balance of its own, to deal with the kind of unexpected things, the June that, where every weekend it rains. And I think in particular, given the uncertainty of the pool situation, you know, I hope that's still on the radar screen as you're looking ahead, because I think it will make a lot of the day-to-day management easier.
Yeah.
And I think it will minimize the potential of having to make more difficult decisions down the road.
Yeah.
That'll be a good conversation to have.
It will be. It'll be nice to get to that point in the next few years. And also, just speaking briefly to John Ferris, being involved with John and the schools, next year will be the first year that the country club's also gonna be maintaining the school fields, and that's new for us. Not every, we're not gonna be cutting the grass, you know, that will still be handled under the DPW, and the school will still have an employee that's handling some of the day-to-day stuff, but we're gonna be managing all of the irrigation needs, the aerification needs, fertilization needs, some of the day-to-day stuff as far as weeding, all the things that they were outsourcing to groups outside of Hingham, we're gonna be handling through the country club next year. So actually, as of next year, the country club will have its hands involved in the day-to-day management of every field in Hingham, which is, which is a first for us.
Well, and that's, and that's a credit to the great work that you and your team do. And I think it will also improve the quality of our fields, and also, it, it might help the schools, because as you outsource those costs, they tend to escalate quite a bit over time, so, you know, it might be able to kind of slow down the, the rate of growth of the maintenance costs, because we know in the schools, between the buildings and the fields, the maintenance is, is pretty extensive.
We're projecting cost savings.
For them, yeah. Significant cost savings. I mean, there's no one making a profit on our end. You know, we're just covering our costs in full, and obviously, when they hire an outside company, there's, there's profit made there, so. It will be interesting to see how it goes. I think, you know, Doug, the new facilities gentleman for the schools, and myself seem to have a pretty good relationship so far, so we'll see how that goes.
Thank you.
Jay, Bill, I want to thank you for making your presentation. At the few years that I've been doing it, it's true, you do have probably the most challenging budget, only because revenues are, as we say, unpredictable. We've had circumstances over the last few years, and obviously, other things come into play, in terms of structural issues that complicated, and you've, you've taken the right steps, from what I could see each time, to work with whoever, whether it be the school department or rec, and those ideas, you know, they'll come out of thin air. It takes a lot of time and effort, and that collaborative spirit is appreciated by me and I'm sure by all of us, so. I just had a really quick question, is, I know we spent a lot of time over the last couple of years talking about the pool, and I just, I did briefly read what was there. So where are we with that? What's, what's the plan with the pool?
So we applied, so we have, so what happened is, a number of years ago, we looked at potentially putting a bubble on the structure that we, that we currently have. We hired a structural engineer to look at it and come back to us with whether or not that was feasible. He came back to us in short and said, "The bubble is not feasible." Not only is the bubble not feasible, but you have stuff you need to deal with ASAP. So we got, we entered into an agreement with the structural engineer to start doing some annual, at first, and now monthly structural assessment stuff. We have a number of crack monitors on the pool. We went a few years without seeing any movement in any of the crack monitors. This past June, after we filled the pool, cleaned the pool, and then filled the pool, we saw movement in the crack monitors for the first time, in a number of the, not all of them, but in a handful of the crack monitors. So we had to do some emergency structural work to address that before we opened the pool for the year. We worked with the building department on that to make sure everything was safe and that the pool was safe to operate. We actually got a stamped letter from the engineer saying that, that it was safe to open. So we're gonna continue that process. What we, what we don't know is the unknown, you know, like what's gonna happen if all of the cracks show movement a year from now? Or we could go a number of years with no movement. It's really hard to tell. There's not a really good set of plans for that pool. It was built and, and prior to a lot of the permitting that we have. So it's, there's unknown there. So what we did as a committee and myself is, we applied to CPC this year for feasibility money, to be able to look at a bunch of different scenarios, you know? What's our best plan with that pool? Do other plans on our property work, if we wanted to build another pool? And look at a financial feasibility to all of that as part of it, to see what makes sense, what type of business plan would make sense, and what type of debt are we looking at?
In terms of the, just so I freshen my memory, in terms of the programs that are being offered in the summer, are those through the Y, or is that?
Currently, they're through the Y. That was a one-year agreement we had with them, and we're looking at potentially going in a different direction, potentially with the recreation department for next year.
The feedback we get is that everybody wants us to have a pool. We've not had one person address us and say that they don't want us to have a pool, so whether we fix the current one, replace it, restore it, whatever we do, we want to make sure that we end up with a pool, and hopefully, we will not have a gap. So we are diligently looking into these alternatives, and we hope this feasibility study gets approved by the CPC so that we can rack it up another notch and come back with some good ideas on where to go in the future.
I won't replow the same ground. I will thank you, though, for Selectmen's Golf Tournament, because I think that's a great tournament, and it's good for the esprit de corps. My brother, who is a golfer, and I am not one.
What do you mean?
Talks about night golf in Braintree. Loves it over there. Is that something you've given?
We've looked at tournaments, so that night golf is, you buy this kit where you have glow-in-the-dark golf balls, you put glow-in-the-dark things on the sticks, and it's, it's, it definitely looks like a lot of fun. I think it's kind of a drinking type of scenario.
Sounds like it.
That explains it.
It's also, what I found is, a lot of those things, like, everyone loves, and I, so we looked at it a few years ago, and we tried to put a tournament together, and I couldn't get enough interest to purchase the equipment to do it, but it's, it's something we'll look into.
I'm just putting it out there. I'm not saying I want to do.
You have your first sign-up right here.
Although if you do it, I'll go.
Some of the things I have to look at, like, how well will the bar do? How well will I do? You know? And make a decision there.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much for coming in. Thank you, gentlemen, for the work you're doing. Appreciate it.
And thanks to the rest of the committee.
Thank you, guys. Happy holidays.
You, too.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
All right, fire.
Sounds like a pretty good idea.
He says it's fun as hell.
They blow balls out of their eyes.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Welcome.
Good evening.
How are we tonight?
Good.
Good.
I'd just like to introduce myself, Bob Olson, Fire Chief for the town of Hingham, Steve Murphy, Deputy of Administration and EMS, and Deputy Lula Chance, Deputy of Training and Operations. We have a pretty simple budget for you. There aren't many increases in a lot of things. We are seeing an increase in runs, particularly in the medical side of things, which is probably observable to you by the increase in ambulance revenue that you noticed over the last year. To help deal with that increasing responses that we're getting, we asked for one additional person. Currently, three of our four shifts operate with 13 people, normally assigned to that shift, and one group runs with 12. So for an operational consistency across the board, and to handle that increased responses, we'd like to add one more person to balance the fire department in four 13-man shifts. They said, "Make it short."
How much when, when, if, if this position were to be added, would, what sort of decrease, if any, might we see in overtime?
Well, I knew that a question would come up, so I actually looked at what would happen this particular fiscal year in the first five months. The town would have saved $34,404 if we had had this person in place for this fiscal year.
So this is actually a way to kind of help you increase consistency of service, but it could also mean at a lower operational cost for the town?
Yeah, the more people we have, that allows us to reduce our manpower. It's very important that we maintain 11 people on duty at all times. If not, we have to take a piece of apparatus out of service. We're only running five pieces of apparatus, so there's a significant reduction in our capability to provide service if one of those pieces has to go out, because we don't have the manpower to man it.
And the minimum manning is dependent on the runs?
No, the minimum manning is dependent, actually, on the number of vehicles that we run.
But I mean, ultimately, it's because of the runs that you're, you're asking for this additional person?
Yeah. One of the things that we look, that we look at when we look at responses, and we look at the workload we have, since it is a number that has increased dramatically since I came on the fire department, we're over 4,300 responses a year. on the fire department, we're over 4,300 responses a year. And one of our issues is how many times do we have overlapping runs or multiple runs at the same time? And our current number is 37.5% of our responses overlap with another response. If you break that into the daytime period, our daytime period, we're running almost 42% overlapping runs during the daytime. So we have to have that apparatus available to handle those multiple runs.
And you don't see any likelihood that the number of runs is going to decrease due to external factors?
No, not with some of the things that we've seen and the fact that we've been involved in the 40B issue for the town of Hingham and look at the developments that are coming. And also, looking at the changing demographics of the town. And we try to look at things with a strategic view when we're trying to look 5, 10, 15, all the way out to 20, 30, and beyond, when we look at these demographics. And the biggest growing segment of the population is in the over-65 population in the town of Hingham. And that is the prime population that uses our EMS service. And as we get more multi-unit housing in with the 40B projects to meet the housing demand, I only see the need for the EMS service and the regular fire department responses increasing between now and 2030.
Is the ambulance service that's provided, is it basic life support or is it advanced?
We run two advanced life support ambulances 24/7. And sometimes through the use of emergency callback, which is one of our procedures we use, when both ambulances are actually tied up at the hospital, we can hire additional people back, either put another engine in service or put another ambulance in service. We do have three ambulances, but two of them are manned all the time.
Southern North?
Yes. Station 3 and Station 10.
Questions from my colleagues.
Just briefly, Tom, I know Ted will normally would tell us about whether he recommends or doesn't recommend the extra person. Did he let you know what?
So he actually increased the budget request to accommodate for these, the full staffing of the three shifts?
Right. That's what I'm asking.
That's his recommendation.
So he's recommending the extra money?
That's right.
Okay. That's good to know.
Yep.
And Chief, I mean, I understand, I think in previous discussions, I've been very sensitive to the needs of the department in terms of what you need to make everybody safe. And especially with, you see, our growing elderly population, it makes sense to me. And I know that's why I was asking if Ted recommended it as well. It seems to make sense to me. I think we're a little at a preliminary stage here. So, you know, we'll talk again, obviously. But I appreciate you coming out and telling us exactly what you need.
Thank you.
And I'm just, so I just throw a couple of numbers out for my colleagues. So one of the things we're doing with all the budgets is we're kind of, you know, looking at everything, kind of taking all the additional requests, seeing kind of how everything comes in to make sure that, you know, everybody can kind of see where we are with services. I just did a couple of quick calculations. And without the position, the labor is going up by 1.3% for next year. The expenses are actually going down, I think, by 1.3% if I did that right. And if you were to add the position, the impact year-over-year would be a 2.3% increase in the budget. So I think that that's kind of noteworthy because, because in effect, this budget, without that, the sort of level services is almost level funding. I guess the thing that I would just sort of throw out there as a bit of a challenge, knowing that our revenue picture's a little bit tight, is that if the position were to come on, would we want to challenge ourselves and offset a portion of it in the overtime for 18? I don't know if that's already reflected in your numbers or not.
No. And part of the reason that we don't do that is the process. It takes the civil service to hire a new person, get them trained at the Mass Fire Academy, get them oriented to our department before we can get them included in the manning.
Yep.
The hiring process and through the academy can be as much as six months.
Okay.
So even if you were to approve the budget, it would probably be a minimum of six months to a maximum of nine months.
Probably nine to 10 months, yeah.
Before they actually get counted in the manning.
Yep. So I think one thing that we might want to understand is we're making budget decisions, is that that potential savings in overtime may not be realized for a year. And, yeah, that, that makes, that makes sense.
I look forward to hearing your recommendation with respect to the ladder truck as well as the progress on the north station issue. I very much enjoyed your presentation at the working group meeting a couple of weeks back.
Thank you again.
Thank you for the fine work that you gentlemen do, your entire department. Thank you very much. Dispatch. Anybody here from Dispatch?
Apparently, I am.
All right. Dispatch.
So Dispatch, as you know, Town Administrator Lexi Ades is the appointee to the Shrek, to the Shrek governing board. And they have started, though they're not finished with their budget process. So what they've done for these purposes is earmark a 5% increase placeholder. And that's--
So we'll circle back.
That's, we're going to have to circle back on that. I can tell you one bit of good news on Shrek is that they recently put into service some number of radios.
55.
55.
About $5,000 per piece.
So totaling over $300,000 in grant money that they received to put radios in service with our public safety offices.
Which actually, so the Hingham Fire Department, we receive the radios with the Shrek has been doing, is they have developed a 14-year plan to replace the radios for all of the different communities. This was year two. We were involved in it. And we basically ended up getting radios that were through 911 ranked funding provided to us. So it kind of eliminated the fact that we would have to replace these in the future. And yeah, there's, we got 50, about $300,000 worth of equipment out of the funding.
Terrific.
That's some great news from Shrek, yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Deputy Murphy.
Tom, do we know when, I seem to remember in past years that sometimes the dispatch budget isn't finalized until the March-April timeframe. Is that what we should expect this year?
I have no reason to believe it wouldn't be the same timeframe as last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, let's move on to the Recreation Commission. I see somebody there from the rec.
Yep. It starts on Roman numeral 12, and jumps to page 137. That's not on your agenda, but it's page 137 is their, is their budget.
Nice to see you.
Whoa.
I'm sorry. 137. Oh, is it on the agenda?
Feel it. Got the same sling on the other side.
No, I believe you. Glad I got it right.
Welcome.
Good evening. Got a wounded warrior at the table. All right. Welcome.
So I just want to jump in, just real quick before they start, just to tee it off. Their total request was $93,202, which was matched the manager's recommendation or the administrator's recommendation. And that's only a 0.27% increase. So, Mark?
So the operating budget is that one item that Tom just mentioned. That's my salary. But most of our fiscal operations happen within the revolving fund, which is, should be part of your packet that you received. Our net revenue for operations for FY 2016 was just shy of $1.1 million. And we finished in the black by $1,164 at the end of the fiscal year.
Well done.
Our, we do have a separate gift account, which is our one big fundraiser of the year, the July 4th Road Race, in revenue that did $100,000. And we made approximately $50,000 off of that as well. And we look at the Road Race Fund as our capital fund, if you will, to help put money into ball fields or playgrounds. I know we were here a couple of months ago and we did a full annual review. But just a quick recap, I would say some of our positives in this last fiscal year were the completion of the Crest Field Playground, which was able to get South Hingham a brand-new public playground, as well as provide the special-needs community really a place that adds play value to that community with a handicap swing, port-in-place rubber pathways, musical instruments, other equipment with tactile feel to it. So we're really excited to get that opened up. That was about a month ago. And then this winter, really excited to, after six years, about four or five rounds of funding with great help of the CPC, we're looking forward to opening up the Hingham Rec Barn, which will provide public bathrooms to everyone at Cronin Field, as well as about a 1,200-square-foot program room where the rec department can offer programs to the public. So really excited about that. Some new programs this past year, really looking at expanding. We noticed that Hingham doesn't have a youth field hockey program. We believe field hockey might start in middle school. And we think there's a huge potential there to fill a gap that's not being offered right now. So we're excited to get into field hockey and see where that can lead to. Pickleball's been big for us, really expanding Hingham Youth Tennis, skateboarding. And we started getting into martial arts, specifically Taekwondo. So all off to great starts and excited for the future on those programs. This past year, we're also able to, from the Road Race account, put $32,000 into upgrading our entire fleet of spin bikes. A challenge that we, that is always ongoing is non-fee-based recreational amenities such as playgrounds, hockey courts, basketball courts, and tennis courts. It's always a challenge to find the revenue for those. It's why we try to do as many programs as we can so that we do have a little bit to put into some of the non-fee-based recreational amenities. And projects that we look to for the future, one piece of property that's under the rec commission is off of Hull Street, the Hull Street Field. And we really want to take a hard look at that to see if it's feasible to add a neighborhood playground there, similar to what we've done at Rabbit Woods or Crest Field. So we'll be looking at that in the very near, near future. Also excited at the continued working relationship with Jay McGrill and the South Shore Country Club on offering programs over there, tennis, golf, possibly looking at the pool. So excited for that potential. So that was a quick summary.
Okay. Colleagues, questions?
It's just good to hear, you know, that you're expanding at least the parameters of what you might be offering. There's always something new and upgrading equipment, obviously. Just on the rec barn, did you say you have a projected date on that?
We're really hoping for the first week in January. We're at the stage now where we're getting signatures from the different town permitting departments. So we're really close.
Great.
The fees were waived, right?
I think so.
I'm glad to hear that you're looking at that, that potential play space over on Hull Street. I actually drive down there somewhat frequently. And as I look at all the wonderful improvements to playgrounds that you've made, it, the ones that are in need of, that are in need of attention now are standing out even more. And I also like the idea that as we're looking at playgrounds, we're doing them sort of around different parts of town. So thank you, thank you for looking at that. I would just note, we have something in our budget books that, that shows where, it's a summary of the revolving fund. And I would just mention that, and my hat's off to Mark, to you and the Recreation Commission, for investing in maintaining the fields and the properties that you have. And I realize that as, as more fields come online and more playgrounds, you know, that does create budgetary pressure. But I think we all understand, and your budget demonstrates, that it's much more cost-effective to take care of these things along the way than to kind of wait. And so my hope is that you have continued success with the revenue programs that will allow you to, you know, make, make these sorts of investments in Crest Field, Hershey Field, Carlson Field, Cronin Field, just to name a few.
I think Mary raised an excellent point about citing these playgrounds throughout the town. And I used to live on Canterbury Street when there was a playground there with swing sets and slides. And I enjoyed taking my children down there. So to the extent you can revive that, I'd encourage it. Because there's a lot of kids in that neck of the woods. So be good if--
Yeah, we'll definitely take a hard look at that.
Appreciate that. Appreciate it very much.
Paul, if you don't mind just my pointing out, you know, Mark is a very humble guy, but he, he's working very closely and the rec commission is with, with the South Shore Country Club, Mary, like you mentioned earlier. And their efforts are saving, going to be saving the town a lot of money over the years to come. And Mark is, and Jay are working very well together. And it's, it's nice to see.
Good to hear.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
You too.
Have a good holiday.
Police Department is on--
Police.
Roman numeral nine.
Evening, Chief.
Hi.
Deputy.
Good to see you.
How are you tonight?
I'm handling three tonight, so let me know.
You can do it.
You can do it. Have a trifecta going here. Really like the spot.
You have the floor, sir.
Paul, how's your book lineup, I guess?
We've got page number 52, which would be the police department.
Okay.
So let's do that one.
The police department, just this year, has been really not asking for much. We're trying to keep at the level of funding concept. It looks like our calls are going to average out to be about the same they were last year, 24,000. And we're maintaining a 53-man department. I think our two increases, looking at an increase for $40,000 in overtime. And the only other, the other two increases are in expenses. We have a $10,000 expense program that I'd just like to explain to you. When we purchase our tasers, which we have all new tasers this year, Taser has this, what they call a Taser insurance program. We, for every unit, we pay, say, $100 or $200 a year. We carry that out over a five-year cost. That provides us for insurance and replacement of any unit that breaks. At the end of five years, we automatically get 53 new tasers at no cost to the town. So it's basically taking out of the capital outlay and putting it into the expense, the yearly expense budget. And that's the $10,000 increase on that. And then there's a $4,000 increase. Just to me, what we found is like what we call professional services, when we did the town hall training for the active shooter training, we hired a company by the name of Synergy. And in order to properly do that, we have to have a line item which allows us to pay a vendor like that. So we've added $4,000 in that.
Questions from my colleagues.
Chief, a couple of things. First of all, thank you for all your, for the whole department.
Thank you.
And I think we've said it before, but it just appears mentioning again, you know, in terms of the feedback that I get and people in town about the quality of your department, I think it's worth noting. And no matter whatever facet of the community we're involved in, you folks are always there. And a good example of that is, we were meeting earlier regarding the Hingham Cares.
Yes, yes.
That's currently in the Subs Abuse Coalition. And I will tell you that Chief is as active as anybody in that. And has come up, comes up with ideas and suggestions. And the energy, we really appreciate it. And I just want to make you know that because it's an important thing as we, as we understand the growing problem.
Yes, definitely is. And I think that's something that we, you know, one of the major shifts in the police department is that we all see what's going on in society. Right now, I think the police department is sort of being used as a stopgap to provide social, social work until-- social work until the government can backfill those spots. So, we're really working on reaching out to the different people in the community and staying active in these programs and providing that guardianship to the community and being transparent with what we do and really staying involved because it's so important. And we have such a great town, and we're going to continue with that. So, our emphasis is actually staying involvement, the involvement with the community and working on programs to solve problems.
Thank you. Another question I have, and I couldn't remember, like, last year, I was trying to think, and I probably should have looked. In terms of the overtime, is that about the same? Is it more? Is it less? Is there anything we need to look at in terms of long-term, or, you know, is this just something that happens?
I think it's just something that for us, it's tough to really gauge overtime because so much of it is generated by the work that the officers are doing. It's generated by what the demands of the society are. I mean, throughout this year, during different events, you know, we felt the need that we had to staff up a little bit higher than we normally did just because of the climate. And, you know, we did a lot of training this year, not only with the town hall, but with all four schools. And one of the things we felt was really critical just to, we did this training with the schools, we had six or seven officers involved with them because they're familiar faces. You have a group of teachers that are a little bit nervous about this. We're so excited because all that training went really, really great. And I think part of it was because we took the extra personnel and involved them so that the school members always had someone there that they knew. They were friendly faces there, and I think that's what you need to do in society now. And that's like, so, a lot of our energy is going into that. But I think there's a rising cost in overtime all the time. I think there's going to be a point where we're going to have to start looking at adding people, but I'm trying to hold the line on that right now under the conditions of the budget.
That's what I was asking. I mean, I know at some point, if it got to the point where you thought we needed more manpower, I'm not saying that that's, I mean, play obviously now, but if you did versus the overtime, just, I mean, obviously you'll speak up at the appropriate time.
Yes, yeah. I think we could handle it right now, but I think as, just with the fire department basically went over, we see the housing needs in Hingham. It's definitely going to infect our calls for service, and it's going to spread us thinner. So, we're, over the next couple of years, we'll probably be trying to make some increases.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I thought I saw reference in the budget book that some of this overtime request was for training and certification.
Yes.
Is that mandated training and certification, or is it, you know, part of the department's effort to make sure that our officers are equipped to deal with the circumstances they deal with?
I think it's a little bit of both. We've, we're training a lot in less lethal weapons, tasers, and what we call 40-millimeter. And that, it seems like every time we turn around, when we transition from one type to another, like a newer model, like the ones that we have are newer, it requires like six hours of recertification as opposed to four hours because it's a different style than you used before. And we're also trying to educate and send our officers to schools where they learn diversity and de-escalation of events. And that's just training. And it's really, what we're trying to do, we're going to, for the first time this year, start an indoor, I mean, an in-house training. And we're going to be using online computers and systems with one of the local approved training committees. So, that should hopefully save us some money there. And I think it will actually be a better training, and it will allow us to, the money that we're probably going to save is going to go back into educating offices and some of the needs that we need for society now.
Okay. I think as we move through the budget, and, you know, you heard as we were talking a little bit earlier that, you know, this year looks to be like a little more particularly challenging. I might be interested, kind of down the road before we vote budgets, to just understand kind of how much of that is sort of the regular overtime and how much is the training and certification. And the reason I say that is that I feel like in the last few years, as a town, we've actually been investing in a lot of training and development, which, as a training and development professional, I'm very pleased about. But it, I think as we're making decisions down the road, it would be helpful to understand what sort of is mandated, what might be a little more discretionary. I just had one other question, and I know it's very small dollars, but small dollars are dollars too. One of the things we saw in the animal control budget was an increase in the fuel, just for sort of tracking that separately. Does your fuel cost for next year are going up by about $17,500? Does that reflect taking the animal control fuel out?
Well, it's, yeah, no, no, and that's a good question. What we're finding is that as we become more active, we've increased our minimum manning. Instead of running a minimum of four, we've increased, we're up to two or five-man minimum. So, the cars are actually putting more miles on, they're using more gas.
Yep.
And in the past, for as long as I can remember, the animal controls never had a separate line item for gas. So, I wanted to create that because I'm basically running out of the money to give her.
Okay.
That's where it comes down to. So, now she has, the animal control have their own line item.
Great.
I don't have any questions with respect to budgets, but I'd be interested at some point to hear from the department as to what its experience with the dash cams are.
I'll let Dave speak on that one. He's, when it comes to technology, right here.
They've been very well received. We've had significant impact at court where some of the cases are pleading out where they would normally go to trial, just based on when they find out that there's a dash cam. So, you know, and that aspect, they've helped out.
That says a thousand words.
Yeah, exactly. So, it's helped us immensely. The system we got is automated, so there's not a lot of interaction that people have with it. There's no system that they go through, a process to go through, download the videos. It's automatic. It's stored on a server at town hall that can't be accessed by anyone other than the person who, whose video it was. So, the officer sign in. At the beginning of their shift, they can access their own videos and review them for reports or whatever. So, we've had excellent luck with it. It's a very user-friendly system, and we've been getting the videos down to court on arraignment. And a lot of those cases are pleading out down there, so it's been very positive.
The tasers that are being used by the department, withstanding the rigors of fieldwork?
Yeah, the new ones that we just transitioned to are much better than the older model. And we haven't seen, the other ones, we had a lot of problems where they were down, required maintenance repair on them. The new ones, we haven't experienced that level of downtime with them, so they've been very good, very reliable.
All right. Let's move on to the next item if we might. That'll be Harbor Master.
I just wanted to say, Ken was unable to make it. He's deeply involved in his finals, and I'm sure you can remember those days, right?
Seems like yesterday.
I think the Harbor Masters budget, I, overall, in the past seven years, I really have learned to, a lot more about Hingham Harbor sometimes than I ever really wanted to know. And, you know, I see that as really blossoming, that the town has, the amount of energy and people using that is really growing. Ken's done some wonderful work on expanding the harbor, mooring plans, and access to the harbor. And I think it's a department that just really sort of deserves a little bit more attention than it's gotten in the past. So, we're looking for some increases in the Harbor Master budget. One of the things that we were able to do this year, and I, there's going to be a little switch in numbers, and we're going to make some corrections in that tomorrow because we realized there was an error at the last minute. It was brought up at the AdCom Subcommittee meeting, and the papers haven't been changed. But the end numbers sort of reflect, they're still the same. One of the things that we were able to move, we negotiated with the Personnel Board and also Ted, when we were doing this, is that we had an opportunity to retain and promote sort of our assistant Harbor Master. We found that there was a definite need to have somebody sort of, I sort of refer to him as a sergeant on the road or a lieutenant on the road. In the absence of Ken, he has the command authority to run the department. So, we didn't really have that position before. And this July, we had been on a three-year program to bring the secretary up to 35 hours. That was a really good improvement that we made four or five years ago. But she decided to leave for a different job. So, at that point, we sort of had a choice to make, and we decided that we wanted to take the part-time Harbor Master, assistant Harbor Masters job and make that the full-time position. We presented that to the different boards, and they liked the thinking of it. We were able to, one of the, I think, when you're looking at personnel is you have to maintain good personnel, and when you have the available times, are they going to go elsewhere? So, we were able to retain the assistant, Joe Driscoll, and put him on as a full-time. And what we didn't, what we then did is not paid for the secretary because she had left, and we filled that with some of the part-time assistant Harbor Masters. So, we were able to, this year's budget, handle the increase in cost. When we filled out the paperwork, we sort of forgot that it wasn't quite funded at that point in time. So, I think in 2017, he was funded for, that position was funded for $28,407. We're asking for a $19,091 increase.
So, is that, I'm just trying to square that with, you know, we talk about level services.
Yes, yeah.
So, I'm just having trouble...
Yeah, yeah.
Is it a timing thing?
Yes, we're maintaining the level service of Joe, what we've been using for the past year. And this occurred all prior to the budgets coming down, coming. So, this year, he's basically slated for a full-time 35-hour position because the secretary's position was going to go full-time.
So, for seven...
So, instead of the secretary going full-time, it's about the same money we were able to make the assistant full-time. So, right now, we're running mine as a secretary.
Yep. I guess to me, somewhere in there, the semantics aren't so important, but it seems to me that what you're asking for in '18 then is an increase in services, but...
Yes, yeah, essentially, yes, yeah, you're correct.
And I'm just, again, I'm being particularly attuned to that, given the financial pressure that we're under this year.
Understood.
So, do you see the clerical person, we worked to get that position up to 35 hours. When that position is filled, does the Harbor Master still envision that's going to be 35 hours?
We would like it to be 35 hours, yes.
Yeah, so the work, okay.
Yeah. We've found that it's really become, this is what I was talking about, because it's actually, they're doing a lot more than they're being asked to, and I think the people are demanding that they're available basically five days a week. And we're trying to fill that slot, and we can't do it without putting in some people to work there.
Ken has, in the past, Glenn, provided a lot of great statistics, and I think some of them are in the budget materials that he gave. But I think, I think it might just be helpful to dimensionalize the request a little bit because I think, I think that kind of gives us a better picture of the activity level that he and his team face and when that occurs.
I think the biggest thing we're seeing with Ken is that basically, the revenues that they're taking in is basically offsetting the cost of him running his department.
Yep.
He's done a really good job on bringing in the revenues and not, it's just because of, with the new computer system that they're using and the online registration. Just recently, you talked about increasing some fees because it hasn't been an increase. But I believe if you actually, and we've done this before, we looked at the comparable towns, is that basically Hingham is extremely low for the amount of boat, the cost of running the harbor is extremely low compared to the other communities of equal sizes and equal amount of boats and harbor front. And the money that they're taking in basically is, I believe, I think they're taking in more money than what the Harbor Masters budget is.
And I would just remind us that a lot of those fees go in, and that's a lot of what we're contemplating to use to address some of the infrastructure needs at the harbor.
Yes, yeah.
So, then Glenn, in addition to that, there's a $17,000 additional request in the budget?
Well, yeah, that's, if you look at the 17, it actually becomes a little bit higher, I think, if you look at the increase in the assistant Harbor Masters. So, the total cost goes up, but at the same time, the operating budget goes down to 173, where it was at 190. So, the numbers Ted presented would be the same.
Okay.
20% increase. You know, that's a little bit confusing, and we're going to work that out with Sue and the Advisory Committee tomorrow to finalize the numbers. That's already the game plan for that. And then as far as the other big expense that we're seeing is, for five or six years now, we've talked about moving over to the harbor over in, over in the shipyard area. The MBTA intermodal building is now being fit out, and they've actually got a lot of the equipment in over there. They're just trying to, in short, the MBTA went from a free building to a rent building. And they're expecting the cost to be about $20,000. And the Ted is working with them, and it's still under negotiation. I can talk about how the budget is. I guess it said that they're trying to take the square footage of the building, including the area that is, the can actually have broken down in here.
The public space.
The public space, which we're not really using. So, the argument now becomes, we're only using 4,000 square feet. We're not using the 11,000 square feet of public space that you're using for your other services. So, not only is the, not only are we sort of still working on a price on that, the DCR is arguing with the MBTA over this, and it's been an ongoing thing for about a year and a half now because everyone sort of feels that the MBTA just sort of made a money grab because they have a tight fiscal budget, and now they're going to try to make other people pay for it. And that was never the original agreement, so.
What would, what would the Harbor, the Harbor Masters' presence in that building, would that be, you know, how does that fit with the office here, the presence down at the harbor?
Well, I think we maintain, if you're a boater, last time I checked, I don't think you can get a boat up to the town hall. So, really being in this building, Ken has been moved around a couple of different times. We think that it's essential to have him to the Harbor Masters' office, down the harbor where it belongs.
Yep.
And that's always been the goal of this, is to move that down there. We're able to interconnect with the money. The money's already been allocated and sitting there for quite a long time now to hook everything up so that he's still on line with the town hall.
So, would Ken still be down at the town pier as well?
He'd also have the presence of the town pier. They're going to maintain that little office there, but they'll also have the main office. So, anyone from the waterfront could eventually get down to him.
And would this charge with that, would that give us the ability to have a boat over there, or is that just the arrangement that we have to work out with the marina?
That's an arrangement they work out with the marina. I know the marina does provide them some space down there. And we do pay for some of, we pay for that as well.
I can tell you that, if I don't mind if I just jump in on that R and M grounds item, that's a worst-case scenario budget item. Like Chief said, we've been negotiating this or discussing this with, in-depth with the DCR, the environmental police, and all the other people that will be occupying that building. Like Chief said, this is the T's initial attempt at cost-sharing the operations and maintenance of the building. I have, personally, if you were to ask me, I have no intention that this is going to be the final number. I think this is a worst-case scenario, though, and we didn't want to present something smaller and then get stuck, so.
I mean, while dollar-wise, it's about, it's about, I don't know, a $39,000 increase. It's a 20, when you put all these things in, it's a 22% increase in the Harbor Masters' budget. And if you go back and look over five and 10 years, that's one of our budgets, for all the right reasons, because there's been increased activity. But it's a 22% increase in a year when we're going to be struggling in some ways to keep some, you know, to stay where we are.
So, when we internally, and working with the DCR, had recalculated the square footage and the rent, it should be based on, by our calculation of the square footage that we intend to use, the rent dropped to around $1,500 from $20,000. So, there's a gap. And DCR is having a big problem with this, which is sensitive at the state level.
Questions?
I just want to make sure I understood, Chief, and I want to repeat what Mary was asking to the extent I can. The $17,000 or more increase in the salaries, is that, I mean, she may have asked the same question, is that the clerical?
Yeah, some of it, there was a request for $10,000 for the clerical, which would bring that position up to 35 hours.
Is that the secretary that?
That would be the secretary's position. She was currently at 26. We had asked for this last year and we didn't get it last year. We had also asked for an increase in the position of the assistant. I think we did get some of it, but not all of it to the full amount. The other one, the other increase there is a $7,000 increase and that is the assistants that are actually out, the summer help that's out working and the boats providing and some of that is, we're looking, like I said, I've learned, I used to think that you put your boat in in June and took it out in September. Apparently, that's not the case. They put them in as soon as they can, so we're trying to readjust the harbor masters' hours to meet the demands of the actual harbor. So when people are there and they're being active, when the activity starts in the harbor, we want to have some type of harbor master presence out there, so. And that's happening early and earlier, so it's actually probably starting before April now. Or like April 1st, it starts and people, I mean, you'll drive by the harbor and still see boats in as late as beyond October. So the season is, I mean, stretching out for quite a long, long time and this is an increase to meet those needs.
Just, Tom, just on this additions, is this something Ted has made a recommendation to say, yes, no, let's see?
Yeah, his recommendation is the, is the new, the FY18, it's the same as the department-
It's the same, yeah, yeah.
Was it, or was there an addition?
The number's just-
I think there was an addition.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the additions that were put here.
Yep. So Ted's recommendation for the harbor masters' budget included an additional $38,000.
He's on board for the whole thing?
Right.
Knowing that we probably wouldn't be paying the whole thing, right? You said you said you're down to 1,500 by-
Well, so his additional money was not, was not covered under that 20, right?
I thought, I thought it was.
What's, um-
It says 38, 38 percent.
Chief and I were a little bit at a disadvantage because Ken's not here.
What happened is with the readjustment of the numbers, the administrator's recommendation of 190, 92 for payroll, that is the number that he recommended. That's the number that we're actually putting in with, completing with all the changes. So he has approved the 190, 92, which was a 20, over 20% increase, I think, if you look over his other column. And the expense is a increase of $17,000, which is-
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
We're going to come back to this.
Yeah, sure. I just think of the same-
Why don't we circle back?
Makes sense.
When it's clear.
Okay.
So there's no question as to what's going where.
We have the numbers.
Yeah.
I would just, before we move off this budget, just want to acknowledge, not only does Ken do it, Ken and his team do a great job on the water, but their support to the Harbor Development Committee, to all different harbor-related things is just really tremendous and very much appreciated.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
He's a tremendous resource.
I think that's one of the things, the last couple of years, he's really been, been drawing, other departments are drawing him off to help with their projects. They've been very successful in obtaining grants, bringing money into town that way. So I think that's part of the reason, like we said, that position just keeps getting busier. There's more demands put on it and we're trying to meet those demands and it's not always related to the harbor. It's a lot of other projects going on that he's involved with.
Including our next topic, where he helped us craft the harbor safety policy, so.
Let's move to the animal control budget, appearing on page 70 of our books.
This one's a lot simpler. Everything is remaining the same for the animal control. We made some adjustments in it the year before to meet some of the new mandates that the state has put upon the animal control officers. And the only additional money that we're asking for was the $3,750 for the additional fuel. Everything else remains the same.
Gee, quick question on that. I almost expected I would have saw some extra time in terms of person hours, so to speak, the thought of Bear Cove. Are we not, that not coming into this budget?
Well, that was one of the adjustments we made and we started doing. We were able to, last year, add in a part-time position. And what we've actually done is after we were able to get them trained, they actually went through the same program that we put Leslie through for the in-service police officers. And they're also working in the harbor masters. So we were able to sort of take a couple of the hard workers over that are assistant harbor masters and bring them over to assist in the part-time animal control budget. And those are basically, we have been getting the extra help of Bear Cove Park for right now out of that additional money refunded last year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Leslie just does a tremendous job and she is viewed as such a wonderful asset to the community.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
She is, she is a lifeline to many people in many different ways.
And one of the things we were discussing, whether I told her, she's going to stop keeping animals at her house. We have kennel fees that we're going to start using.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right, at this time, we're going to have a discussion with regards to the barns wharf lease. As I've stated on a number of previous occasions, I'm accused from this due to my relationship with the executive director of Hingham Maritime Center, also known as my daughter, so.
Give me one moment and then just go.
Yeah.
She's coming.
No, he's not leaving, he's coming.
Hi.
of what we heard, I know we've all looked at it, Mary, but maybe just give us a quick, a tom.
Sure. So as you know, we completed a draft version of the lease for public review on December 1st at your meeting. It was made available through the town's website and our office for 12-some days. We received public comment up through the close of business on Monday, the 12th. We received probably in the, in the order of 20 to 25 comments, total comments, public comments. In addition to the public comments, we received comment from the advisory committee. They did a thorough review of it. They received a series of probing questions regarding the structure of the lease and some other key points. Those, those questions have been reviewed and, and answered in writing back to the advisory committee who discussed them at their meeting last night, last night?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday night. Days blend together. At their meeting on Tuesday night, and I think Mr. Coughlin, who is the liaison to, for this topic to the, to the advisory committee, is here to speak on that. We've also, along the way, we've involved the school department very closely through the help of Superintendent Dr. Gallo as well as the athletic director, Margaret Conady. And, and I think we ended up with a pretty good document that reflects their needs as well as ours. And in addition, there is a, another component to the lease, which is the harbor safety policy that was crafted by, in large part, by our harbor master, Ken Corson, as I mentioned a few minutes ago. And that has all been discussed by all parties, including the school department and the maritime center. So I think, again, I think we have something that's, that's worthwhile. I know we have Mr. Coughlin and Dr. Gallo are here and I think, Mrs. Conady is here as well, so.
Sure, I just want to make sure, we thank everybody for the comments that did come in. We want to thank advisory, Dan, and for all the input, because we did get a lot of comments for advisory, which is a good thing. And there were a lot of folks from the community that sent us some comments. I would say virtually all of them were very positive. Some of them were constructive and some of them brought up some very good issues in terms of scenarios that maybe I hadn't envisioned, maybe we hadn't envisioned, and that we would hopefully address tonight. So in no particular order, if Dan would like to maybe come up and speak, then we could get to Dot and anybody else in the audience that would like to speak.
Thank you, Ken Coughlin from the advisory committee. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to review the documents. As Tom said, we were provided with all the documents, the memorandum of understanding and the feedback, you know, from the community so that we could get a good sense of where people were coming from and what the concerns were. And just without recanting everything that we went through, but back in 2015, when the advisory committee considered the motion to authorize a recommendation that the board of selectmen proceed with this lease, there were a number of concerns, a number of questions. And in fact, the advisory committee's vote was not unanimous. And so there were different issues that were out there, more along the lines of imponderables, things we didn't understand at that point in time. And we did note those questions and there were eight of them, actually. And we did find that they were all addressed in the, in the lease and the memorandum of understanding. And in particular, the most troubling concern at that point was the whole question of entering into a 30-year lease without full knowledge of all of the issues, you know, the quality of the wharf, the improvements, the kind of lease terms, the specifics of the lease, et cetera. And we're very pleased to see the lease restructured in a way with really bifurcating the next two or three-year period where everybody works out the issues that they have, you know, among themselves. The town's obligation to get permits, the town's obligations with regard to the wharf, the capital construction of the wharf itself, and then as well, the reciprocal responsibilities of the maritime center. So we thought that the structure was very well done in that regard. The base lease we found was, was appropriate. It's a pretty typical commercial lease, but all of the difficult things were really carved out and put into this, this section up front, so we thought that was appropriate. The other things that we noted was there are certain things that really, you know, can't be considered at this point in time and that really shouldn't be part of the lease. And for instance, one of the things we noted was the wharf itself is in need of repair. And whether we entered into a lease with the maritime center or anyone else, that's an obligation of the town. It's an asset the town has and the town needs to consider that, you know, that concern at some point in time. So even beyond the question of the lease, that was, is an important thing that we needed to address as a capital item at some point in the future. The other things that we noticed were that, in particular, you know, the town was not obligating itself to do anything that couldn't logically be accomplished. In other words, we have a good faith effort here to complete the obligations the town has. There's no event of default if the town doesn't go forward with those things for reasons that we, again, don't yet understand. And so there's a lot of things that have to get done before the 30-year lease is put in place. But we thought that the mechanism that was put in place with the lease and the memorandum of understanding, you know, gave the town the capability to work, you know, in an efficient manner and to get those things accomplished. Most importantly, we also saw the fallback position that if this doesn't go forward because of reasons that, you know, we, again, don't yet understand, that the town doesn't get the permits or the capital raise doesn't happen with the maritime center, we still have the kind of lease structure that we have in place today. So the town has no downside over where we are in today's operation with the one-year lease with the maritime center. So again, we protected our downside, we provided for the opportunity on the upside, and we put together a structure here that I think protects the town. And at the Tuesday night meeting, and Tom, I want to thank you for suggesting the advisory committee had probing questions. Our questions are sometimes referred to with a different adjective. But in any event, you know, we did at the meeting, again, it's not our, our call, it's our, we're an advisory committee and it's the board of selectmen's, you know, decision to make. But we did unanimously agree that the construction of the lease as it was put in place, you know, did protect the town and we would suggest moving forward with it on that basis.
And Dan, just, I believe that the advisory committee received copies of all of the public feedback-
Yes.
-prior to that conversation, so that, that informed some of the conversation you had Tuesday night.
We had a long conversation about many of these issues and the, shall we say, the imponderables beyond the lease itself were particularly a topic for us. And again, we started with the whole question, what were the seven or eight issues that we had before, you know, and how have those been addressed? And so we felt comfortable that our earlier questions, our subsequent questions and the things that we heard from the community have been addressed.
I just want to, I'll thank Susan and Tom for being prompt and very efficient with getting you some of the responses to the comments. That was great.
Very helpful. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan?
Dot, would you like to-
Thank you. I certainly appreciate, and I speak for Margaret and me, the opportunity that we had to have some input into the MOU. We obviously have rowing teams there and we have sailing teams and, and we had some important concerns before all of this began, but we were two good listeners over here and Susan and, and Tom, and so we feel we had ample opportunity to have input that will allow us to keep those teams doing what they're doing. And they all are very successful to be able to keep our SNAP program, special needs program, in place. So I think in terms of looking at the MOU and the lease, I'm comforted that there is a resolution, problem resolution process there, that some things badly needed in any kind of an agreement between two entities. And the fact that that exists is reassuring to us, as well, a one-year kind of look back. You know, as you kind of might imagine, a long-term lease brings angst to a lot of people who are involved in these programs. So in speaking in behalf of the rowing association, there were some other things that they would like to have seen that are longer term. That's understandable. My sense is that if, in fact, there is the one-year look back and there is the opportunity to resolve any problems that can come forward, I'm not as much concerned about that, although I do understand why some members of that group still do have some concerns and questions. But, but we appreciate the outreach and we're happy that we have a situation that's much improved over the situation that existed, with really no language that guides, things like timing and, and the needs of the, of the two programs. So we thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Margaret is here as well, if you have any questions.
I don't know if Margaret wants to say anything.
You know.
Well, I may repeat what we said the other day, but I, and I think everybody knows this, but, and I think I speak for Mary, we, we worked very hard with Hingham Maritime through our negotiators and we did try to be very fair to everybody because, because we have wonderful operations going forth on, you know, both entities and we're very happy with that. And we understood that there were, because we were dealing with students and so forth, I think, you know, I, I think, Mary, we took a very, very close look at that and tried to make sure that we kept that in mind. We were dealing with costs and so forth. I thought it was important, you know, not, not to overburden these, these young men and women who are doing such a wonderful job. And also, we, I think it was important that we put a process in place that, you know, when you're sharing space, it's like, almost like a roommate in some respects, you, this is kind of an added benefit of having a process, that if there's some disputes or misunderstandings or what might have you, that ultimately, there's a way to resolve it. And I have the utmost faith that everybody will work together. And my hope is that we don't ever get to that process, but it's in place if we need it. And, you know, I do welcome anybody else's suggestions on those issues and any others that are here tonight, so. You know, if anybody, we could open it up to the, the audience, if anybody else has a comment or question.
Hello?
How are you?
Good.
Absolutely.
Hi.
My name is Paul Neat. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm the president of the Hingham High School Rowing Association. On behalf of the board, I first and foremost want to thank everybody who's been involved-
My name is Paul Neat. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm the president of the Hingham High School Rowing Association. On behalf of the board, I first and foremost want to thank everybody who's been involved in this process. Hingham Maritime folks, the school committee, selectmen, the townspeople, everybody involved, there's a huge amount of work that went into this, and it's obvious. And I don't think anybody took lightly the implications of a 30-year lease and what it means and how important it is to get it right. So I acknowledge all the hard work and all the positive things that Dot had said. We completely agree with the fact that we have the access to the wharf and to do so at no cost. We recognize that. That's greatly appreciated and acknowledged. There are a couple of things I do want to highlight. And just as a primer, for those who don't know, the Hingham High School Rowing Association is a nonprofit organization that exists solely for the benefit of the Hingham High School rowing kids. You could describe us as a booster club, but we're a lot more than that. And we repair boats, we manage logistics, we hire and manage the coaching staff in concert with the school. And yes, we do things like fundraising, and we buy a boat every year. We donate it to the town. We've donated over $450,000 worth of equipment throughout the 11 years we've been in existence. And so, everything we do is on behalf of the student athletes of Hingham, and we're, you know, not-for-profit. The one big theme that we have is, if you think about the future vision, the boathouse has the opportunity, in our mind, to be the home of Hingham High School crew. And the way the lease is written right now, in the fall, we bring all of our equipment to the wharf. We're there for 10 weeks, and then we remove all of our equipment. And then in the spring, we bring all of our equipment back, and we use it for 10 weeks, and then we remove all of our equipment. And the purpose of a boathouse is to house boats, and we should be factoring in the design of the boathouse to be the home of Hingham High Crew. And that's where we would want to store our boats year-round. That's a logical thing to do. To remove them on and off the property, it seems a little bit more troublesome than it needs to be. Similarly, having space to have our ergometers there and facilities to do our rowing workouts is a very logical thing to do if you're building a rowing complex. So we're just advocating the design needs to factor this in, and the aspiration and everything in the lease and the MOU, we're advocating that we have that be the grounding If we were a for-profit group, or if this was private property, this would be a whole different conversation. It's because this is town property, and it's because we represent the town's kids, that this has become, this is a different conversation. So, that's one factor, the home of Hingham High Crew. The second factor is, in reality, there's a three-and-a-half to eight-year period between when the lease is signed and when there's going to be a boathouse there. And I think the language in the lease is written, for the most part, as if there's a boathouse, which I think is great. But there are exclusive areas that are designated on the map, and those are controlled by Hingham Maritime. And we're advocating that between now and when there's a building, that we should have non-exclusive access to that property, because that space is where we house all of our boats and where we have stored them historically. So that's one part. And then there's some other things that we would like, some accommodations. We're advocating language is written into the MOU so we can have more clarity, and those include things like access to the boathouse for our rowers, because there are times when there's bad weather where we're looking, the coaches are looking to have meetings with the kids. Coaches are allowed in the boathouse, the rowers are not. We're looking to have semi-permanent boat racks that we can install something in the ground. Today, our boat racks sit on top of the ground. If we get hit by a microburst or there's a thunderstorm, we could lose our entire fleet in a flash. So we want the ability to put some racks in the ground, and they would be removable. And when, and I'm, these concessions we're asking for are only during our season. So, when we're not using them during our 20 weeks that we're on the wharf, we could either remove them, or Hingham Maritime could use them. We would certainly pay for them. Similarly, we're asking for a storage shed facility, some, something, where we could put our ergometers, so that when the weather is bad, and/or if there's an event on the wharf, we can remove them off of the pavilion and put them into this building. If electronics and rain don't mix so well, and the ergometers are electronic pieces of equipment, and also, we'd like to be able to get them out of the way. If Hingham Maritime asks us to remove them from the property because they have an event, it's very tedious to take 25 ergs off the property, and we don't really have a place to put them. And then the last thing, and most important, is launches, access for launches overnight on the docks. The safety manual states that we, that the launches should be close at hand. And currently, we're not allowed to have our launches on the docks this past season. And due to the generosity of Nick Bond and his marina, we have several launches there, and the harbor master has given us a couple moorings, which are spread throughout the harbor. But we don't have easy, quick access to our launches. The coaches have to spend significant amount of time retrieving the launches and bringing them over to Hingham Maritime every day for practice. We realize there's not infinite space, but we're asking for space for three launches during our season, and only during our season. And we're hoping that can be accommodated. So, those are provisions, basically, to hold us over until we have a new building. And respecting that there's going to be a reasonable amount of time and a whole lot of work to do permitting and everything else, and fundraising and so forth, we think these are reasonable requests, and we think it's important to have language in the lease, or, excuse me, in the MOU. We have provided some language. We're asking you to include that language or a variation of it into the MOU. And then a couple of quick concerns. One is, the current lease has a reference to non-interference, and there's been a wide spectrum of interpretation of exactly what non-interference means. The new lease has a couple of references to non-interference, and I think it's in everybody's best interest for us just to define what that is. We certainly, Hingham High School Rowing Association does not want to interfere with Hingham Maritime's activities or anything that's happening on the wharf, and we want to have a clear understanding for what that is, because we want to make sure that that doesn't happen. The last thing of a concern is, is kind of a meaty one in terms of the ownership of the docks. All of the equipment, all of the improvements that Hingham Maritime makes to the wharf are reverted to the town as town property, but the docks are not. And the whole spirit of the lease, from my perspective anyway, is to provide access to the water. If the docks are considered private property, it seems like it's setting us up for a long-term to have it be more managed as a private entity than it is creating access and opportunity to access the water for the community. But more importantly, and I'm not saying this to be pessimistic, if Hingham Maritime were to default on its obligation, and we're not able to meet it, and those docks are private property, the Hingham Sailing Team, the Hingham Rowing Team, and the town doesn't have access to the water, because the ramps and the docks are private property. So, I think that's something that is worth consideration. So, anyway, in conclusion, we want to thank everybody for your work. There's a lot of positive things in here. We're very excited to have the lease improved, or the property improved, and the opportunity to work together to build a future. We ask you to consider the suggestions we made for adding language to the MOU and to help us realize this as the home for Hingham High Crew.
I have a couple of questions for you. Thank you for the comments. And I will say that not all of them were anticipated by me, obviously. We try to look at every single angle. So I apologize in advance if we, if we didn't address a couple of these issues, but it wasn't by design. You were talking about racks being placed in the ground. Currently, they're just placed above-
They sit on top of the ground. It's like an A-frame, and there's two of them with horizontal bars. And so, a big wind comes, a microburst, it would lift them up and drop them.
And so the racks would be just during the season, and they would be placed where the boats are, would be normally during the season?
Placement would have to be figured out wherever it works for the Hingham Maritime and the whole facility. But we envision you would put holes in the ground where you would put a pipe, that you could remove that pipe. But the pipe would be, basically, have spacers for boats. So it would be a rack that would be embedded in the ground.
I guess I'm just trying to see, does that envision taking up more space, or is it pretty much the space that they're in now, but you just have some type of secure-
It would be same space, but secure.
And in terms of the ramps, and I think we'll, we'll probably get into this a little bit, but currently now, the ramps that are in there, and I probably should know the answer, but I don't, who's, who owns them presently?
Hingham Maritime does, I believe. We have helped contribute to the docks historically and paid for half of the ramp that is currently being used.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood that. And the launches, just so I, again, I have some familiarity, obviously, with it, but I believe you said access to launches overnight?
Yeah.
Okay. Could you just explain that to me again?
So, we keep most of our launches over at Nick Bond's marina.
Right.
And that's where they live at night. And the coaches drive them from Nick Bond's marina over to Hingham Maritime, and then, for practice, and then they have to assemble the kids. So it makes a lot more sense for the coaches to come to the wharf and get on a launch at the docks at the wharf. And also, if there's a safety issue and somebody needs to get out in the water quickly, it's much more efficient if we have a couple launches on the docks right then and there. We can hop into launching.
Let me just ask a follow-up question, because as a boater, I know that, like, the big no-no when you're anywhere is to not tie up docks. It would seem to me that that would tie up the docks, and that that would get in the way of other usage of those docks. If you have, you know, if you have launches parked overnight, so 6 o'clock, the launches get parked, and they stay there all the next day until 3 o'clock, when the coaches arrive, I'm just, just trying to picture that dock, which doesn't seem very large, and thinking, for those groups that are using the dock when the students are at school, how do we, how do we get around that? You know?
Well, there's, Hingham, and you all can correct me if I'm wrong, Hingham Maritime has four launches on the docks right now that they use for their programming. There, I believe, is additional space that we could find where we could put launches on the ends of the docks, or we could find places to put them that aren't in the way.
It just seems to me that a launch, that we're going to have boats tied up all during the day when other programs are going on, and that that, while that may solve an issue that you have, I'm concerned that it might create another issue.
Right. So, I'm making the request, making the assumption that we can find a place to put them that doesn't interfere with launching boats on and off the docks. I think there's ways to do that.
Okay.
And also, you know, the harbor master gave us some moorings that are spread throughout the harbor. We obviously would want them as, we realize we can't put all of our launches on the docks. We're not expecting that. We're not asking for that. But we want them as close as possible to the marina, and that, from a safety and efficiency standpoint, is certainly preferable.
Oh, just a question on the ergometers. And you say you're looking for a shed on the pier. Where, what's the process now? In other words, are they stored somewhere?
Right now, we store them, well, actually, we don't have a home for them, quite frankly. During our season, we store them under the pavilion. And what happens is, when it rains, it usually rains sideways, and they get wet. And we, there are plastic sides that are on two of the sides of the pavilion. And, you know, we do our best to try to keep them dry and keep them out of the rain, but they do get wet. And it's also that, and when there's an event on the wharf, you know, Hingham Maritime asks us to remove them, which is understandable, and we, much easier to put them in a shed right there than have to take them off somewhere.
So during the season, you've been asked to remove them from the pier?
Well, if they have an event with a couple hundred people, they want to use the pavilion.
I'm just trying to picture in my head where they are. You said they're underneath the-
We stack them up on end, so they're standing up tall, and we usually line them up on one end of the pavilion. And they take up, we usually put them too deep, and they take up most of the back wall.
Paul, I can maybe clarify a little bit of that. Thank you, Paul. The, I think you've been working maybe a little bit with John Ferris to try to find a home for the, for the boats for winter storage.
Yes.
I was actually down at the HMLP building today. We haven't had a chance to reach out to you yet, but the, it looks like that storage facility, that will, that building will work very well for a storage facility. I was in there today. I think John is going to plan on reaching out to you tomorrow.
Excellent. With the snow coming, we're getting nervous.
As was I. No, I understand. I was in there this afternoon, though, and it looks like it's, it'll work, it'll work very well.
Thank you.
Just, one other thing. It says, you said access to the boathouse for rowers. I know we're not looking at the new facility, we're looking at the existing facility.
Correct.
Do you have access to it now?
The coaches do.
Well, I know you mentioned, like, if it's raining or something, is that something that's been worked out, or has that come up in the past, or the kids needed to get inside for any-
I mean, if kids actually have to get in, I believe they go in there, but sometimes they need to change. But we've been asked to keep the kids out of the boathouse and have it be coaches only. And in the past, we had a desk in the corner where a coach had a laptop, and they could look at stats, and they could sit down, and they could meet with rowers and have conversations. And we realize space is limited in the current, in the current boathouse. We're just asking for, if we can parse out a section during our season that we can use for the purpose of the coaches and the student athletes. And that includes storage. We have a, we do have one storage container, one storage unit in the corner. But we would like a little space where we can parse out during our season.
And I may, in a moment, ask Susan to comment on the non-interference language, because I can't give you a response to that.
Sure.
I'm sure there'll be an answer.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you all for everything you've done to this and for your consideration tonight.
Does someone want to address that issue?
Sure. Sure. So, we could go over some of these. I can't anecdotally, I rely on Attorney Murphy to kind of touch base on the sections of the lease and the MOU that pertain, and to perhaps clarify some of my statements. But I can touch on some of these things. I can tell you that in working closely with Margaret during this whole process, this is very much intended to be the home of not just the rowing, but also the sailing teams. That's the intent. That is what it is. It is what it's been for some time, is my understanding, and it's the intent moving forward. You know, we can find ways, the selectman, as the owners of the property, can find ways to find appropriate signage to denote that a little clearer to people, so that the kids do feel like it's their home. The one caution I would give regarding, and I'm going to stretch that a little bit down to some of the other points that were made regarding access in the building, in this interim window before the new building is built, and we're still stuck with this during that time with the existing smaller structure. I think it's difficult to identify space in that, in that facility that's there now, that's very small, for a team room, per se, for access to the team. I think that, right now, they are welcomed into the building, is my understanding, for, in the cases of inclement weather, et cetera. But for a dedicated space within that building is, that's a pretty tight building. We are, we have very much addressed that with the new building. There will be a dedicated team room for them. So that is something that we're aware of, but we're limited to reality, to what we have in place now. And, you know, as an overarching comment, I would, I'd like to state that, you know, the leases with Hingham Maritime Center and their, they were the respondent to the lease, and their daily functions are important in, I don't want to say paramount, because we have other concerns as well, but they're important in understanding, to understand what their daily functions and their daily needs are. So we can't jeopardize that either. That's not fair to the other party at the table. So we need to keep that in mind. As far as the three-and-a-half to eight-year window, where we're unlikely, while we get to the point to have, having this new building, and we're in this limbo period, we have, the storage of the, of the boats, as I just mentioned, is anticipated to take place over at the former HLMP, Hingham Light, Hingham Municipal Light Plant, whatever that acronym is, over at, on Quishing Street. I was in there today. HMLP is out of there. It's a great, big, empty space. We're likely to have some other use in there as well, but the intent is to find storage for their fleet, for the towns, the town, you know, the crew fleet in that facility. And that can be a long-term solution. There's no reason that that has to be a short-term solution. We own that building now. HMLP is out of there. So-
And I just might ask a question to Hingham Maritime. My understanding is that when the new boathouse is completed, that even your fleet in the wintertime will be stored off premises?
That's what we envision.
Yeah. And can you just, Rick, you had told me a little bit, because one of the things, and as we got a lot of these concerns in a note, we've all been spending time over the last few days trying to understand the concerns and do things. Can you maybe- Can you maybe speak to what the plan is for your fleet in the winter and how you envision the boathouse being used in the winter?
So we don't see that the footprint of the wharf would tolerate an 8,000 or 11,000 square foot building, which is probably what you would need to house everybody's fleets. And we responded to the RFP to have a maritime center for education and other uses, and it's going to be a fairly small building. And so to tie up that prime waterfront space that could be used for education and other purposes all winter long, storing boats in cold storage that aren't being used, we don't think makes sense. Where exactly we're going to put our boats for the rest of the season? Hopefully, the town will be nice to us and help us find a spot for them.
Yeah, and we've done that, yeah.
And so that's our thinking and that's the concern.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Let's see, some of my other notes. The only, the thing I would like to point out as well is, and it's a true statement, that right now, there's not a clear dispute resolution process in the current lease. And you end up with parties that have, on occasion, conflicting needs and desires using that public wharf. And it's difficult. The lease, the current lease language doesn't allow or doesn't, didn't take into account a way to deal with that. And we've done that with this lease, and that process is initiating from the beginning. That's not dependent on the new building. So from, you know, January 1 forward, that process would be in place. So in cases where there are disputes on the use of that wharf, there's a process. If they're related to the high school team, the process is that the dispute would begin with the school department and the athletic director. In those cases, if the dispute can't be resolved there, it would revert to the town administrator, and if it can't be resolved there, it ultimately comes to the board. And in cases of non-high school-related conflicts, it would start with the town administrator and if it can't be resolved, again, end up at the board. So.
Just on that point, and I could always speak for myself, but I know Mary and I are part of the process. I mean, we hope that these matters with this process in place will resolve themselves. But we thought it was important for us to be in the game, so to speak. So if there's an issue that needs to get resolved, we're not going to pass the buck to somebody else. Ultimately, the board will make the decision. And I think that's a good thing.
That's right.
So I just want you to know that we're hopeful, but we're also part of the process as well.
And one of the last notes I had here regarding some of the comments we heard was access to the docks owned by HMC. It is written into this lease that the high school teams have full access to the docks. That's written into the lease. You know, that's.
The MOU in particular.
Excuse me, into the MOU, yeah. I've been referring to the whole, you're right. And that was obviously something we worked closely with the school department on.
Just a comment and a question on that. One comment for the audience is that in our negotiations, one of the things that we talked about was that, you know, that we were very concerned about public access to the docks and floats. It made us nervous from a safety perspective that, you know, you might have kids down on the docks on the floats and, you know, God forbid, something could happen. So I think the idea that those docks and floats would not be accessible to the public was a deliberate, was a deliberate decision. I might just ask, I think there was a question, and Susan, maybe you can help with this, but let's just say hypothetically that docks and floats are in and that the alternate lease term is triggered. And we have alternate lease terms in the event that the lease lays out milestones. So it says, you know, within this many years, this is what the town has to do, this is what Hingham Maritime has to do. Hypothetically, if the alternate lease term were triggered, would our sailing and rowing clubs be, would their ability to conduct their seasons be disrupted at all?
No, I mean, the, no, is the short answer. I can expand if you want to, but the answer is no because it would basically put the relationship between the town and the Hingham Maritime to something that's very similar to the existing lease. You have the buildings that are out there now, you have the operations that are out there now. The overarching goal of the long-term 30-year lease is that a new facility, nice facility, all improvements, utilities, all those things happen, and that's an asset to the town at the end of the lease. But in the event, as you said, the milestones can't be met, it reverts to the type of lease that's been in place for the last five years, which is really a year-to-year that keeps going, however either Hingham Maritime or the Board of Selectmen can say, we have different ideas, we don't, you know, we're going to give you notice. It's a reasonable amount of notice because they have operations out there, but it would be the same as it is last year, this year, last year, the year before, as far as being able to, all the parties using it.
Thank you. And I would just make one last point on the docks and floats, which was that I think in, you know, we've had a lot of correspondence from a lot of people in this room, even over the last year. And I think, you know, this question of the docks and floats, I remember getting, you know, getting some, getting an email in the summer in like July, just speaking personally, and I don't know if this ever came up, I can't remember, in our discussions, but as I look at all, you know, the idea that the town would in some way assume ownership of the docks and floats, while, you know, that has some merit from different perspectives, one thing it would mean is that the town would be then, would bear the financial responsibility for maintaining them. And right now, as we look at our capital needs across our whole system on the municipal and school side, I think we, you know, we have so many different capital needs that I was very reluctant to take on maintenance of yet another asset, knowing that our capital dollars were in high demand.
And also related to that, docks, because they're in the water and they get some level of abuse just from usual wear and tear, storms, they don't have a very long, they're not like a building. They don't have a very long lifespan. They need to be replaced. There are permit fees that private parties pay that the town would not pay. There's a whole host of others that go with docks and floats, other than just saying it's ours so we can use it any way we want. So, you know, that's something to keep in mind as well.
And I would imagine that our advisory colleagues would probably have something to say if Dan is kind of nodding his head, if, again, the town were to assume the financial responsibility for maintaining that asset. Because an important principle when this first kind of came up is what sort of financial responsibility does the town have? And, you know, one of the things Paul and I have worked through is, you know, the town isn't going to pay for insurance. The town isn't, you know, we looked very carefully because we understood that we were potentially committing taxpayer dollars. And Tom, can you speak to the launches?
Sure. So the launch system is very much as Mr. Neet presented it. They're stored overnight out of moorings out in the harbor. And I can work with the harbor master, talk to harbor master about maybe some nearer moorings. I didn't realize that they were spread like that. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. I'll talk to Ken about that. But they have to access those, they have access to those boats through the other marina. But when, once they're on the water and the kids are in the boats during their practices, that's when the launches are allowed to be at the docks. So throughout the entire practice, the kids, the launches are with the kids, with the boats, at the docks, and then would have to go back to the moorings after the practices were over.
Can you guys speak to the dock space? Because you probably know it better than.
So we have 11 launches ourself, and we keep four of them at the dock and the others are on moorings. So we don't have enough room for all of our launches at the dock either. And it's just an organizational, it's an organizational thing for safety reasons that when classes are going out sailing or rowing from HMC, we, the coaches get there in time to get the launches, bring them to the dock. It's just a part of the setup before any of our classes go out. So the launches come in and can be at the docks while the, you know, kids are then getting ready and getting in boats, and then they can all go off together.
Can I make another comment?
Somebody, whoever's.
Paul, what's your? So, that's true. One comment I want to make is that the season for the high school and the season for Hingham Maritime are often on different schedules. So we start early in the spring, and Hingham Maritime hasn't started its programming yet. So there's opportunity for us to have our boats either on the docks before you have put all of your launches on there, or to be on the moorings that are closer because you haven't even put your boats in yet. So I'm just advocating, there's opportunity for schedule to, we can be flexible during the early part of our season to have access on the docks. Seems like it's much more realistic because you haven't put all of your launches in the water yet. And that's when, from a safety standpoint, we're even more concerned because the water temperature is cold. And then the same thing happens on the back end of the fall season where our programming continues after. So I think there's opportunity for schedule, and we're not asking for, to take over. It's like, can we get them as close as possible and on the docks for part of the season and for some number of launches? I think there's an opportunity to work out something.
I have a recommendation.
Just, hold on just for a quick second. One thing I've been, again, working closely with Ms. Conroy, who's the executive director of the Maritime Center, and Mrs. Conity along the way, is, you know, they've pledged, and I've seen it, working together, when these types of opportunities arise, the two of them are very much able to work together to facilitate, you know, just logical efficiencies when available. And I've heard that from both of them, to work together.
I was going to say the same exact thing. In fact, getting the MOU to where it was involved, you know, Tom, and it doesn't have to involve Tom going forward, but it was just because we're in the, you know, first version of doing all of this. But Rosman and Margaret sat down together and they explained what one needed and what the struggle was, and language in the MOU came out of those conversations. And the language in the MOU is that the Hingham High School teams will have access to the wharf and the floats and docks during their seasons. How they coordinate is really the communication part of it. And the other part of it that we thought was really important is, and both Superintendent Gallo and Ms. Conity made it very clear to Tom and myself that, you know, particularly the rowing program, the sailing program is a high school sport sponsored through the school, but the rowing program wouldn't exist the way it exists without the HHsRA. So it's always been emphasized and acknowledged the important role they play in it. But at the end of the day, they're a private organization, they're not a town organization, and they can only do what they do to the extent the school department wants a rowing team, encourages, et cetera. So the key here is, as with all the other sports, whether it's football, field hockey, whatever sport, is that the athletic director really needs to be the person, when any issue comes up for any sport, to be kind of the, you know, the main communicator. So if a coach of the football team has an issue, they'll go to the athletic director to try to have that sorted out. And so the key that we've tried to set up here is, as the coaches who are on the docks and the kids, whoever, are operating and things come up, the key is for them to bring it to Margaret. And Margaret is the main communicator with the venue as to how it all works out. And so that's how it's structured, and it's meant in order to keep kind of a consistent flow and a predictable flow as to who's talking, you know, who's talking to who, where the, you know, have the issues vetted. So we think we have that all. It's not perfect, but we have a framework for it.
And it also sounds like it's consistent with other, sort of the protocol with other Tom, the question of the sort of non-interference, and there was a question that it was in the existing lease, it's in the new lease, and I think I heard maybe a little bit of a concern that maybe there still is maybe a little bit of ambiguity or uncertainty.
So to me, that was addressed with the dispute resolution process. So if there is, if I'm understanding the question correctly, if there's a claim of interference by the organization to another or with HMC's operations, that process could be dealt with through the dispute resolution process.
And the other thing to remember is that the other lease was a very bare bones type of lease. It didn't, it didn't even talk about, and I don't know if that lease maybe even, and I'm getting the dates all mushed together in my head, what that lease coming into being and the rowing program coming into being and the expansion of the rowing, I mean, a lot has happened over the last 10 years. But the MOU, and this is something that can be, you know, tweaked over time as things change for seasons and teams, but what was important was to define, well, what are the seasons? What are the schedules going to be? And so now there is a procedure for schedules to be, for the teams to be, and practices and regattas and whatever, to be communicated from the athletic director to HMC. There's a lot more communication on the where and who and when, so that hopefully those types of interference are going to be less likely because it will be more defined. And it's going to have, you're going to have bad weather, you're going to have rescheduling, things are going to come up. But we've tried to identify where those things will come up and put some structure around them.
So, you know, my perspective, and I'm not going to repeat everything Susan and Tom said, was, again, that was in place so that we could, we could get these issues resolved if there were any, everybody worked together. The two words, communication and being reasonable. If I was making a decision on that, I would look at the language, obviously, but I would also look at the reasonableness of the actions or whatever the dispute was. So I think we've covered it, and I think that, and I have such a great feeling about this, you know, and I know that it's early in the document's life and we probably will tweak it, you know, but Mary and I, and I know that Hingham Maritime, and I know everybody involved, put a lot of time into this to make it work. And, you know, it just makes so much sense for us to have such great programs down there, and we have all kinds of dedicated people, you know, with all these programs. I just have a great feeling about it. So, you know, we're trying to address all these questions tonight, but in the end, I think we've covered it as best we can.
I remember back when the high school fields and in particular, the noise, the noise policy, Margaret and Dot remember meeting after meeting about the noise policy. And I think that there were a lot of different, you know, you could sort of speculate, well, this could happen or that could happen. And I think in some ways, we took a couple mechanisms from, you know, the great process that was used for the high school fields around the noise policy and the usage policy and the lights, and the one-year look back and a vehicle for, you know, kind of making sure that if people had some concerns, they had a way and they knew, you know, who do I, who do I take those concerns to? And I think our experience with the high school fields is that, was that a lot of what, you know, I think sometimes we envisioned kind of the worst case will happen. And I don't, I think in the case of the high school fields and everything, it was a great experience. Yeah, I, I'm kind of where you are. I don't know if there are any other comments or.
Margaret wanted to say something, so I.
Margaret and I, you show.
Sure. Well.
I just want to comment on storage because storage is such an issue for just about every
department in town. And so really pleased to hear that the light department thing is going to work out for winter storage. I might point out that we have the bus garage, of course, at the depot, and many departments in town have stuff there, and we welcome that. I mean, we all have to share the limited storage that there's there. So at that, at that site, the Maritime Center actually has several bays there. We're not, we're not saying you have to leave, but given that that site is under discussion for a fire station, we're making an effort. We, at the last school committee meeting, we voted surplus, some items to clear out. So we are going to be looking for everybody that's sharing the space there to see if they can consolidate any, and if not, at least to clean up so that we can take the best advantage of the, of the space. But we know that likely the light plan is an interim kind of storage, but just to keep on everyone's mind, storage is huge for us and for everyone else as well.
Thank you.
Margaret?
Thank you. I just wanted to encourage you, Tom, to speak with the harbor master about having perhaps moorings a little closer than, I don't, you know, know exactly where they were, but also the accessibility to get. they were, but also the accessibility to get to them. I was down there one day this fall looking for a specific coach, and he wasn't there on the waterfront, and they were like, oh, he's, he's out there. And I thought, you know, I thought he took his boat to work that day because he was coming from the beach. What's that? And, you know, I just would prefer my coaches to be there when our kids are there. And so, if there was some, you know, when they arrive, if there's some way that's easier for them to get to their safety boats and, you know, have them ready.
Will do.
And that's a work in progress, I know, and I know we'll get it right, and just wanted to...
I think we should be able to prioritize some of the moorings nearer to the docks.
Yes, yeah. And Mary, you're right, there was a lot of angst when we were going through the usage policy for the field, and, you know, we kept going back and forth, but I do think we, we got it exactly right in time. So, I'm hopeful with this as well.
Anybody else have any comments?
Is this the appropriate time to say thank you?
That's a call.
So, I'm Rick Pedoni, president of the Maritime Center's board, and we've been working with a variety of folks in town on this for the last four years, but really with the two of you, and the staff, and Susan more recently, and the lease for the past two years. And I can say it's been a very hard bargain that you drove, it wasn't quite what we had hoped for initially on behalf of the Maritime Center. And, but when I step back as a citizen of the town, I can say you did the right thing, and we're in a really good spot, and I think that we can make this work, and we all appreciate all of your effort, and we're looking forward to turning to raising money hopefully tomorrow morning.
Great.
Thank you.
Do you accept a motion?
I would accept a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen enter into and execute the following documents in the form of the draft dated December 15, 2016. A, lease with the Town of Hingham and Hingham Maritime Center, Inc. B, enter into the memorandum of understanding, Inc., between the Hingham Board of Selectmen and Hingham Maritime Center, Inc., and joined by Hingham Public Schools, and the Selectmen adopt the harbor access safety policy.
So, I'll second that. And just, Tom, do you want to speak on that at all, or is anything needs to be said about the policy? I know we didn't talk about it till...
It was drafted by Ken Corson, so it's very much been vetted by him, as well as the school department. It mirrors a lot of the, all of the safety policies that he felt were important regarding the Coast Guard guidance, and I think there was some MIA guidance in there, right? So, it's very comprehensive, and it's been vetted.
You all set? I just want to make sure...
I'm good.
Okay. No other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Rick, can I borrow you when you're...
We have a bit more business, so...
Thank you, Mary. Congratulations.
You look a little too comfortable back there, want to get you back up here? I have a cold, so give me a...
We have a bit more business?
Yeah, we do. Tom, you want to move these guys?
Yeah, yeah.
because it's related to the Lehner property...
Yeah, so I, Susan can recap this better than I can, but I could tell you, it sounds like the closing is going to happen in early to mid-January. This is an extension of that to a safe date, so that we know we won't go beyond it. But, Susan, if you want to go through some of the details...
Yeah, so, just so people know, because it was a part of the...
Hey, Glenn, Chief, could you take these guys outside, please?
They're just, they're just signing some documents, so, Rick, if you could just bring those back in. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Just so people understand, because people have been following Lehner property, it's approximately 50 acres, it's a $5 million purchase price through the Community Preservation Act fund. There was a hope that the town would qualify for state grant funds. We submitted the application on a timely basis, it was an excellent application, but there is a, and Lonnie Fournier, the conservation officer, could explain this even better than I can, but there are, you get points based on certain aspects. And there was something, and I want to say it was related to biodiversity or some conservation value, that you could get zero to nine points, and the town only got zero points on that one. And so, it dropped down our total score. And because of that, as it was explained to Lonnie, because they called her directly to explain to her what happened, by the time they got to Hingham, they got, they gave money to everybody ahead of Hingham, they had run out of money. Lonnie asked, is there anything we could have done differently as a town in our application to have gotten more points? And they said that whatever this category is really had to do with your geographic location in the state, and the property is where it is. So, I just say Lonnie and Charlie Berry, and a lot of people put a lot of work into that grant application, it really was an excellent piece of work. But unfortunately, the town did not get any of those funds, as town meeting was aware, it was in the comment, the purchase was going to go forward with or without those funds, the most the town could have qualified for was $400,000 out of the $5 million. It still would have been a nice boost, but the town did not get it, and I just want to make sure that the board and the public were aware what happened with that. But, we were waiting on the grant before we were going to close, and then there was a closing date of December 30th, but because the decision on the grant came in so late, we had requested from the Lehners a little more time to see if the funds might come. And once we did that, we were pushed off as far as our internal town meeting schedules, and so, they've agreed to push it back. So, we'll probably close the week of January 9th, and there's some, there's a vote, CONCOM needs to make, there's another vote that the Board of Selectmen will have to do to approve the deed in your first meeting in January, but other than that, it's, it's on track.
Great, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion, it's been seconded.
Did you second it?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, the next one, Tom.
Yes, sir. So, this is, we're asking to sign an agreement with Vision Government Solutions to perform the tri-annual, is that the right word, every three years, evaluation update for, for the community. This is, I believe this is, this is a statute that's, that statute is being changed, and it will now moved every five years, I think is what Rick told us during his, during his budget review. But, it's currently every three years we have to engage in a consultant to come in and help us with that effort, and that's what this contract is for.
I'll entertain a motion to sign an agreement between the Town of Hingham and Vision Government Solutions, Inc., in the amount of $62,500 to develop and implement a valuation update program for taxable exempt real property.
So, moved.
Second, just a quick question. So, I just, I was looking at it again, so, Vision was the low bidder on this?
Yeah, they did a full procurement, yeah, okay, full procurement process.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to renew the following annual common victual licenses, there are 23 in total. I propose we incorporate and adopt into the vote and have it reflected in the formal minutes those entities listed below. Have a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to renew the limousine license for Chelseby Livery for one year expiring January 1, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo, any, anything you want to add before we sign off for the evening?
Yes, we have a couple of things we need to do. So, per the new public records law that's becoming effective on January 1st, the state is requiring all municipalities to identify formally a records access, a records access officer, the RAO. That is by default in the law, the town clerk. After speaking with town council this evening, we thought it would be, you know, I'm, I'm learning the Hingham terms as I go, the belt and suspenders approach, to formally appoint Ms. McCracken as the RAO for Hingham.
I'll entertain such a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Mr. Mayo?
All right. We are not able to hold our executive session mattered this evening.
Good.
We're not prepared for that indefinitely. There was some paperwork that is still pending.
Better to be prepared and ready.
Yes, yes, that's how I felt as well. And I think that's it. I feel like I'm forgetting something. I think that's it.
Well, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done in connection with all of us, wasn't involved in it, but I know it was a bit of a lift, and thank you very much.
Light. You feel lighter?
No, you got two.
I've already got the list.
I know.
I know the first phone call I'm getting tomorrow morning, so, no, I'll be on a plane tomorrow morning, on Monday. So, but yeah, no, it's, it's nice to have it done.
Mr. Chairman? Is there anything you'd like to say?
I think, I think I should, since we're not going to be meeting until beginning of next year, right?
Right, January 15th.
So, I think I would just briefly like to just wish everybody the happiest and healthiest of Christmas and holidays, and, you know, stay healthy unlike me. But, I just, I think it's just appropriate at this time to say that we're so very lucky to have a working group that we do here, and I hope that everybody enjoys their holiday, I'm sure they will, and will, you know, enjoy any time off you have. But, we look forward to working with everybody, obviously, to the extent we will be meeting or discussing for the end of the year, but obviously, we look forward to the next year and try to accomplish things like, you know, what we did tonight with this Barnes Wharf negotiation was, you know, was really, I hope people appreciate and understand how much work went into that. And there's, there's other, other mountains to climb, and we'll all try to do it by working together, and thank you again for Tom, Rick, and Susan, and Sally, we don't want to leave you out here, for everything you do.
Thank you. I would just echo my good wishes for the holiday, wish everyone a happy new year. I think in the last few weeks, this board has, you know, through all the budget hearings and through all the wonderful community events that we have the privilege of participating in, I think in the last few weeks, we, we see some of the best aspects of Hingham and some of what makes this town so special. It's great people who work here, of which some are seated at this table, it's tremendous volunteers, it's people who just contribute to this community in, in so many different ways, and it helps make the town so special, so just very grateful for that. It's been a privilege to serve with, with Paul and Paul for the past year, and look forward to another good year.
Well, thank you very much, the feeling's mutual. I'm very happy because I am enjoying the arrival of my newest grandchild, so that...
Congratulations.
It's a happy Christmas season for me. I, I want to thank the town departments for all the hard work that they've all done this year. It shows in all aspects of our governance. I'm enjoying the professionalism that I'm seeing in the presentation of the budgets. The town is, is a desirable place to live for, for a lot of different reasons, but our town employees, I think, are invested in the quality of life that we enjoy, and I really thank them for that. I wish them all a very merry Christmas and a happy holiday period, and to all of you out there as well. This, this is a big room, been in it many times before. As a kid, it used to be the library on the second floor, and it's, I've had a few planning board meetings in here too, so, it's all good. Although my colleague's on either side of me and sick, I'm somehow dodging the bullet. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.